So we can go right to public input. And I see two hands so far. Carol Lef.
Yes, good evening. I'm Carol Lef speaking for the ACLU very briefly. We urge the city council to pass the important anti racism resolution tonight, but then to go on further and put those aspirational principles into practice by supporting the use of force policy the ACLU and the NAACP have put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tulay La.
Hey, everybody. It's great to see your faces again. I'm really glad to join you here this evening. I was so excited when I saw the draft revolution resolution circulating. I was privileged to see an early draft of this when I had my brief time with all of you in the fall, knowing how important this was to the work that you all are doing together as well as to the work that councilperson Sharice Hurley has been doing, Herzi has been doing. I just wanted to call in and share my support for this resolution. I think that it is incredibly important for any body like ours, any city leadership, to do the kind of work that this resolution does to first acknowledge the damage that has been created by white supremacy and racism throughout history. In order to move forward and understand where it is that we need to go, it's incredibly important to understand where we've been, and this resolution provides that basis. We understand that there will be action that emerges from this, but again, this is a basis upon which we can allow some measurement of healing and a platform upon which to move forward. The sentiments that are included in this resolution, I believe, and I hope can work in tandem with the city's new involvement in Gare to give Urbana's elected officials, appointed officials and staff, as well as all of us interested and involved community members, a basis upon which that we can move forward with policy and practices. I believe strongly that by understanding the underpinning of what white supremacy and racism has done, we can find within that the necessary work needed to focus work on economic development, working with Cunningham Township, building new and important policies regarding community safety and response to things like the mental health crisis and so forth. So thank you all for the wonderful work that you're doing. Sharice, thank you so much. I know that you put out so much time and energy into this, and it is makes me so proud to be a member of to have once been a member of your council and to continue to be a very devoted and a member of Urbana, and I look forward to supporting all of you in the work that you will be doing along this basis. So have a good evening, and I urge you to support this resolution.
You. Next is Grace Wilken.
Okay, I just got the unmute asked. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Grace Wilken. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a resident of Urbana in Ward Six. I wanted to call and also support the resolution tonight. I think that it's important to acknowledge our history and make a commitment to address it and keep working through it. I think the next step is to proactively seek to live out this ordinance, and I hope and look forward to seeing that. On a separate note, I also wanted to still caution about my concerns about indoor dining and lifting COVID restrictions when the students have just come back, and there might be a new strain of the virus in town. So it just doesn't make sense to me. It seems dangerous, and just want to express my concern on that as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jane McClintock.
Hello, this is Danielle Chen with. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi. Danielle Chen with 412 West Illinois Street in Urbana. I also serve as the township supervisor. I've read through the resolution before you to end structural racism and achieve racial equity. And I want to applaud Sharice in particular and any other collaborators you had, Sharice, for enumerating some of the details of the history of racial bias and white supremacy in Urbana. Appreciate you drawing a bright line in language about acceptable and unacceptable behavior. As chairperson for CU Public Health, we just passed a similar resolution, and I brought up a similar concern to that board as I do to you today. Making anti racism proclamations and resolution could be viewed as political posturing unless accompanied by specific policy action. In the case of CU Public Health, we did not have specific policy proposals before us. So we created a task force as part of our resolution, part of the action was creating a task force so that Black Indigenous people of color and LGBTQ staff at CU Public Health, who were paid through an additional stipend, were invited to assess and bring forth recommendations to us. So that is an ongoing process. In the case of Urbana, I think it's a little bit of a different situation because you have a series of smart actionable proposals that the public has brought to you in various ways in the last year. I'm going to summarize a few of them here, and I would encourage you to revise this resolution to include specific direction to city staff. As you know, four council members may direct staff. So I call this five actions the city of Urbana can take now to advance racial justice. One, adopt the use of force policy changes proposed by the NAACP and ACLU that were just given to you, including de-escalation as a mandatory response, use of force as only objection, but it's objectively reasonable, necessary, and proportional, and there are other things in that proposal. Number two, interrupt illegal housing discrimination in Urbana by following the Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office recommendations in our February 2020 report uncovering blatant discrimination by 22 landlords operating in Urbana. We believe that you, all you need to do is actually just follow your own policy on the book and direct your attorney to send a cease and desist orders to all 22 violators if they are found to continue to be violating at this point. That would take maybe an intern three or four days to check on that. You should also implement regular testing of rental companies and landlords so that the discrimination doesn't go undercover, and there are other recommendations. I will send you a link to this so you have it. Third, address the long legacy of racially biased police traffic and pedestrian stops in Urbana by adopting Gerdrol Cruze's proposed resolution from November 16, 2019, excuse me, 2020. And it directs the police department to essentially review traffic stop policies and procedures to eliminate disparities by the end of 2021, monitor individual officers' amount of time in specific locations and conducting stops, and require written consent from the driver before conducting a vehicle search, which I thought was an excellent, excellent proposal. Four, update the civilian review board of police ordinance and procedures with recommendations from the Stop Police Violence Group offered in June 2020 that includes the CPRB ordinance being updated to acknowledge video witnessing as well as making sure that the CPRB is able to access all complaints without tampering or filtering by the city administrator or chief of police. And number four, increase investment in low income neighborhoods that boosts diversity and hiring at the city for both staff and contractors. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Next is Kiara Johnson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, hi. I'm Kiara Johnson. I am a sophomore student at Urbana High School, and I just wanted to address the driver's ed complaints. Well, not yes, okay. In school, you are learning. In school, you are prepared to drive. You learn procedures on what you should do when a tire blows out, how you should handle a skid in slippery roads. You learn that you should stay in your car when you are stopped by any police officer and let them know your every move when grabbing the document. The leading, the learning process is held up when schools are not equipped with cars that run properly for student drivers education. Being a student in this district, I see new police cars for officers who have transportation at their disposal to do their job. Why do they need new vehicles when there are teen drivers on the road who have to ride in student driver's ed cars that have been around for more than 20 years? These cars are constantly in need of repairs for transmission, and they have over 400,000 miles. If the district budget permits, RSOs to be given the privilege of new vehicles to protect students, shouldn't the students that they are protecting be given the same driving privilege? These RSOs have vehicles and licenses. However, these students do not. Where should the urgency lie? One police car can cost from 440 to $50,000, while for that price, you can purchase more than one student driver's ed vehicle. With the evolution of new cars, the surrounding sensors will help upcoming drivers be more aware of their surroundings and avoid crashes. Why can't the funds from the government and taxpayers be used for drivers' education? This will positively help the Champaign-Urbana community by including and by including new student drivers. That is all I had to say about that.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Christopher Hanson.
Hey, Bill. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Let me click on my little list here. Oh, well, I was going to ask about this mysterious city update, but I guess that's been rescheduled. I do want to encourage the mayor and the council to give as much information to the public as possible when they have agenda items. It's actually, this is an issue that's actually been raised even by council members. I'm happy that they haven't gotten, you know, information about these items that are going to come up. The first issue I wanted to talk about is I have heard that another Urbana candidate has has been removed or is going to be removed from the ballot. Mr. Adam Rush, he's running as a Libertarian in Ward One. I've I've reviewed what documents I have, and I've also sent a FOIA request to the city clerk to get more. It looks to me like Phyllis Clark just sent a letter to the candidate saying you're not eligible to be a candidate, and it sounds like she's just going to remove him from the ballot or the county clerk is going to do that. I sure would like an explanation from the city on exactly what authority is being invoked here. There was no objection made to that candidacy, and I don't see a problem with the petition that was filed. So I sure would like an explanation from our clerk on what what she, what she intends to do and why she, how, how and why she intends to remove a candidate from the ballot without there ever having been an objection. It sure doesn't seem right to me, and this isn't the first attempt this election cycle by seasoned politicians to play games and try to boot people off the ballot. So I don't like to see any of that. I'd also like to, I haven't had time to fully read over the use of force policy that the NAACP and ACLU put together. I do want to remind the council that those two groups aren't a full representation of the public. There are other people in Urbana who have input. And and by the way, we almost, I mean, besides having Chief Seraphin present, we actually never hear from our own police officers as far as I've never heard from them. Their input, are we ever going to hear from them on what they would like to see Urbana do in terms of policing? It's kind of, it feels a little not enough to just have, you know, one proxy kind of tell us, but when you guys passed the 10 shared principles, I think I spoke then, and I told you it just looked like political posturing to me, and it was because you immediately started violating it, right? I mean, the shared principles mentioned transparency twice, and then the city engaged in all manner of illegal activity when it comes to public records requests, and you still haven't really talked about that. So I'm wondering if you're going to pass this structural racism resolution. Is the same thing going to happen? Are we gonna, are you, is it going to be the case where you pass the resolution, and then the city just does the opposite of what the resolution says? Are we going to have more racism somehow? I'm going to say less politely what Daniel Chen with said and say that this is posturing. It has nothing in it that indicates that the city is going to take any action or do anything. And as a reminder, it was just a couple, few weeks ago that the city administrator tried to push to get the council to to make it so that the city was completely exempt from our own human rights laws. This, this resolution is not consistent with that effort. 10 months ago, our police beat a Black woman in the street, and our police department said it was all good and okay, and the presentations and everything at the council side was in the direction of saying it's all good and okay. The only person who took a few steps in direction of saying it wasn't okay was was really Jared Miller. So this resolution is not consistent with what our city has been doing and is doing. So I just don't understand the point of it. Why don't, why don't, why don't we actually talk about something that means something instead of just posturing?
Next is Brian Dunn.
Hello, my name is Brian Dunn. I'm from Champaign. First of all, I just want to say that it's super cool to have a high schooler on here giving public input, that kind of community engagement so early and talking about, you know, issues that are so important is just so rad to see, and I'm so hyped on that. But anyway, I want to talk about, you know, if we're gonna talk about structural racism, maybe we should look at the city structure that is known for disproportionately arresting Black children and, you know, just Black individuals in general and pulling over Black people disproportionately. And I think that, you know, we have addressed and the community has addressed a big area of structural racism in policing, and I just don't see any action being taken on that. And in fact, I see further investment in this, you know, big conglomerate of structural racism. And I just think that instead of investing in things like gas masks for police to gas people who, you know, by the numbers are probably going to be Black community members. Instead of investing in that, maybe we invest in our teachers and our caregivers and our schools. You know, so many teachers in our community, they end up having to buy their own supplies for kids, and I'm sure that they've made tons of investments in their online setups over the past year. And I just don't see that kind of buy-in from police ever. How about we have them, you know, crowdfund for whatever gear they need, or, you know, maybe we talk to their union, and their union can gather stuff within their members to buy things to make them feel safe and secure in their job that's no more dangerous than my job when I was a delivery driver. So those are just some things that if we're looking to address structural racism, I think that looking at the police critically would be a great way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Aldous Melinda Carter.
Actually, didn't have my hand up, but I was going to wait until everybody else. There's other people I can wait. Give me a little time. Is there anyone else? I can wait.
There's still four ahead of you. Did you want to wait?
Yes, please.
Okay. We'll come back. Shonda Bishop.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to begin with a word of thanks to the council members who brought forth the resolution that's coming up. I wholeheartedly support this first step in moving forward and creating a just and equitable community. The first step is always recognizing the problem so that you can create solutions. I don't have any doubt that this will pass, but from that point, we must move with urgency to create, you know, something like an equity task force to develop a detailed policy agenda and fund an equity plan that resolves key disparities within the next couple of years. And we need to put a solid timeframe on that. And those disparities should include education, jobs and income, policing and health and well-being, but should also include other goals as well. This equity task force should identify specific time bound metrics for each of the key disparity goals and should be guided by validated frameworks like the social determinants of health. I personally have a number of ideas and strategies I would like to see considered as we turn this resolution into action. For instance, if Black and Brown students are more likely to go to schools that don't have the digital technology or live in homes without broadband access, the equity task force should set a goal of eliminating those disparities within two years. So to that end, I encourage the council to take immediate action and seek input from minority communities as we work to end structural racism in Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. So I see that the resolution committing to end structural racism and achieve racial equities on the agenda tonight. So you resolve to recognize and value diversity in the city's policies, personnel, and investment. And it's also followed by more beautiful language about using all methods and methodologies at your disposal through the city's departments, city council, boards, and commissions. So here's a couple of actions that you can actually take to show that there's meaning behind these words. First, you can remove discriminatory language from the city's job ads. The HRC appeals hearing panel unanimously determined that the city has violated the human rights ordinance. However, from listening to the Civil Service Commission meetings, the members are acting like having the discriminatory language in job ads is just fine, and they are not even acknowledging the problem or discussing its removal. At the same time, you have city administrator Carol Mitten telling the HRC that the city will ignore the outcome of the hearing. So the city should not be exempt from under the jurisdiction of the HRC, and this is one step that you guys can easily take to show that this new resolution means something. The next thing you can do is make make the police complaint process work. We've been working on fixing the CPRB shortcomings for months, but at every step, city staff will try to step in to protect the interest of the police department. We just saw it a few, couple of weeks ago when Carol Mitten brought in an outside counsel just to reiterate the same viewpoint as herself to basically tell the CPRB members that their discussions about the firsthand account and ability to initiate a complaint was essentially pointless, even though there's nothing in ordinance that prevents it. You can also remove the discriminatory restriction in the CPRB ordinance that says that no person with a felony conviction or plea shall be eligible to serve on the CPRB. These people, people with residents with firsthand experience with the justice system are the most qualified to serve the public's interest in police oversight. Next, you can also acknowledge the police misconduct and racism that happened when Elia Lewis was beaten by Urbana police officers. So far, it's not been done, but you can start by apologizing and do what the public has been asking for months to remedy the situation. Hold a meaningful discussion on how this happened and how the police officers will be held accountable. Just writing, "They will be held accountable," has no meaning if if they're not held, if it's not actually done. Discuss how this will be prevented in the future. The public has told you what needs to be done for the use of force policy revisions. Listen to what the public has been telling you. Thank you.
Thank you. Meg McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Dear City Council, my name's Meg McDonald. My pronouns are she, they, and I live and work in Ward Five. I have quite a few different things to talk about tonight, but I guess I'll start out with saying Happy Black History Month and Happy February. I'm happy that this resolution committing to end structural racism and achieve racial equity is on the table.
Table.
Can you hear me?
Dennis, could you, Dennis, could you mute yourself?
Can I get my time back or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Get distracted. Anyway, I'm glad this resolution is on the table because conversations around this is needed, acknowledging the harm that white supremacy has caused, but I also know that it doesn't address any of the current issues of police brutality in the Urbana police force. We have been trying to have some of these conversations at city council meetings and outside of them all of 2020 and beforehand with the cops in schools conversations. And before that, because racism has been around as long as this country. And before that, I thought Jared and Mary Alice were going to bring up anti racist topic in Subjects Weekly. I may be misremembering that. Maybe they were told not to do it anymore. But I really hope this resolution doesn't become forgotten like that did. We went over a subpar use of force policy presentation by the chief of police a few weeks ago. The NAACP and ACLU wrote their own in response. The community had lots of great input from the listening sessions and more. I'm curious to hear how that policy update is going and whether or not it was rushed to get those grants approved. Transparency is appreciated. There is no route to ending structural racism without seriously disarming and defunding the police force. There is no route to true community health and safety without forcing the police to relinquish the majority of the city funds that they hold. Those funds could be used in so many different ways to actually actively help people, not just respond to them after the issue has occurred. We had a protest in late May in the reaction to George Floyd's murder. The police showed up in riot gear and agitated and kettled the crowd. Escalated. Over 20 people were arrested. Most of them were young and Black. All of them were given felonies, held for two days without bail, and are still facing the effects of a structurally racist system. Where is our truth to power for them? Instead, we are possibly considering a bid for gas masks in the next month for our police force, up towards $10,000 worth of equipment. What exactly does the police force think is going to happen? And if whatever they think is going to happen, happens, how do they prevent it or treat the root of those issues? When we don't put our money to the real solutions and instead to the cops again and again, what message is this sending us, the community? Speaking of messages we send to our community, what messages are BANA sending with these electoral process mishaps? Newcomers are inspired to volunteer their time to run for city office and are being challenged. I unfortunately participated in the first challenge in 20 years a couple of months ago, and my petitions were objected, but I went through the steps and then the extra steps that were asked of me and made it on the ballot. Adam Rush went through the steps to get on the ballot. He collected signatures in Ward One, chose a party. Whether or not Libertarian Party is an established party in Champaign County is irrelevant now because that could have been challenged during the challenging period. Now it's about why it wasn't acknowledged or remedied until January, when it's past the point of redemption for Adam Rush. Are you hoping no one hears about it or that no one cares or both? I guess the last thing, if I have time, is I would bring up COVID and how a lot of seniors without internet are missing out on vaccine distribution. I'm sure you already know this. I know we couldn't do mobile testing, but I saw community members suggest that maybe Urbana could be innovative with mobile vaccine distribution bans, something like that. Also, are we ever going to open up a testing site in Urbana? It doesn't look like this. It doesn't look like COVID is going away. It looks like there's a new variant. So getting a testing site in Urbana would be good. Critique, critique isn't condemnation. Inquiring about testing sites in Urbana and asking last week about why we are not using the UIUC saliva testing is a valid question, and I'm allowed to bring ideas and questions week after week, and I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin.
Hi, my name is Colin Dodson. I am a resident of Ward Two. My pronouns are they/them. So I want to echo the support that's been raised for this resolution in upholding the pursuit of racial equity and challenging white supremacy. And at the same time, as echoing many of the concerns surrounding, how will this be applied to the city of Urbana's relationship to the police force? how will this be applied to the city of Urbana's relationship to the police force, how much money is spent there? And the concerns about actionable results out of this. But since those have largely been covered, there are basically two points that I'd like to make. In general, this resolution does make a good point of using present tense language. However, it's not consistently applied, which I think falls into a little bit of a trap where we tend to think that racial oppression and white supremacy and all of these things are artifacts of the past when they are still ongoing active harms being conducted and reinforced by the society that we currently live in. So I would make a recommendation to, to at the very least, make that acknowledgement explicit, whether it's in this resolution or in updates to it in the future. Beyond that, this is a great start. However, I think, again, it is important to emphasize and to identify roots, right? You know, I call myself a radical and what I mean by that is root seeking. I try to identify the source of problems and how to best address them rather than to, you know, put a Band-Aid over the symptom. With that in mind, we also need to address the longstanding economic impact and legacy of white supremacy as well as its continuing impacts. Consider, for example, that after the end of World War II, when slavery was officially abolished, the former enslaved people in the United States were not compensated, never received reparations or restitution for the generations of harm caused, but slaveholders were. Bearing that in mind, not only have populations in this country whose legacies have been shaped by these oppressive institutions never been made whole for them, economic harm continues, you know, through the form of gentrification, through the form of overcriminalization, exclusion from job opportunities, housing opportunities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So how do we address the economic justice perspective as it concerns racial justice, racial equity and challenging white supremacy? Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Nixon? And then Elders, you'll be next. Go ahead, Sarah. I'm sorry. Sarah Nixon? I guess, can Sarah unmute herself?
It looks like she's unmuted, so I'm not sure if she might be having some microphone issues or?
Okay. Okay, we'll try to come back if you want to speak later, Sarah. Elders, Melinda Carr?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. I just wanted to make a comments and first acknowledge the resolution and it's a great resolution overall with a historical point of view of things that have happened in the past and acknowledging all the history. And it makes a really good start for us to go forward. I just wanted to clarify, last week I spoke and about the incident and Dr. Ellis, and then there was the same incident in the Dr. Martin Luther King subdivision in Champaign and then extended to some other neighborhoods in Urbana, I understand. And I know that the communication of that incident, so with the plastic bag with the no white guilt piece of paper and the rock, because I didn't say that. And so that what happened is something that needs to be communicated widely because it's noted as a national type of thing that has happened in other places. So when I said, I mentioned Facebook as the first point of communication because it's a private media and everyone cannot access Facebook. They can't search for information on Facebook. And so the information that was posted, for example, that the mayor put on Facebook, the memo, the information from our alderperson, I'm just talking, you know, as we, everybody didn't get to see that. So the memo, which included the Southern Property Law Center, was important. So I'm saying not to be silent. So this resolution with that act is important for us to make it a public event because when we're silent, that's what's happened in the past. We have people who, and I'm just going since we're talking about historical things, you know, Emmett Till's mother, she made that a public thing of her son. Dr. Martin Luther King and all those who fought, if they had have been silent, we wouldn't be here, you know, being able to go through the things that we're going through and recognizing what they did for us. So we can't be silent. We have to be public. So I'm saying this resolution is a great start. And we need, it would be good if we could get some of the recommendations from people such as, as I said, Darryl Cruz. Then y'all know they've been around for a long time fighting this fight. Some people who are no longer here with us have been fighting this fight. We got to do some things that are going to be implementable. If we, if we set up task force, sometimes things get lost. And so the things that we know people have been fighting for, for a long time, it would be nice if we could get them in here so that they're documented. So I'm just saying, because I've seen some things and I have been here like some of the others walking in, but I'm sure I'll have some comments later on as the Minnesota Alliance, for example, we supported, I know my time is running out, the IDA traffic stop information, but we weren't acknowledged as a person who or organization who presented information. So transparency, we need to include that. We need to make sure we're accountable. And so I hope we don't lose that momentum is what I'm saying. Thank you. I know I lost, I know I'm out of time. So thank you for allowing me.
Thank you very much. Justin Hendricks?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, everyone. My name is Justin Michael Hendricks, community engineer, Parkland College student, Champaign, Urbana resident. You're a write-in candidate for District Three in Champaign, Illinois this election season. Be sure to write my name on your ballot this election season. I just want to say thank you to everyone who has donated to the community closets and pantries that Hidden Homeboy and Marshall Austin has created. Please look out for more and we're thankful, thankful for the clothes that you're doing and giving at IMC. I want to also say that Black Lives are important, just like Black History Month, we need Black History Year. We need more than just a nappy day. So make sure the school districts know that there is more than just a nappy day that we need to do to make sure that Black Lives and Black families are important, especially during the month of February. Also, equity is important, but also we know if equity was first, equality wouldn't have to be asked for as well. We know that Champaign is very historical in 1940 Supreme Court acts that pushed Black bodies out to create the North End. We know about the 1970 home rules that birthed in Jim Crow. So let's make sure that we're not moving back but forward when we're talking about equity in socioeconomics and social services. Also, when we say this equity that we need for Black bodies and Black communities, let's go ahead and defund the police and take that equity out of that budget because there's no reason we need a SWAT team and SWAT gears and shiny suits. What they can do to equity, they can be like the city of Austin in their city council when they voted this past week to purchase a hotel and turning it into 60 units for permanent supportive housing for people that are experiencing chronic homelessness. And they're voting coming up soon to purchase another hotel. So they're doing it for more than just a demographic of Black bodies, but a large demographic of homelessness that they're doing and providing services for. Also, when you're talking about this with this equity, make sure you're investing into the Black preschools that are around town. There are plenty of Black preschools that are in-home doing childcare services or more. Invest in these in-home childcare services as well because there are many services that are not being provided for them and they need that equity. Also, when you're investing in equity, don't just invest in the, in the, in the Black businesses that you always see. There are more Black businesses than the ones you always are investing in to get that clarity or that charity for the, for the pat on the back for the Black community. Start investing in more Black businesses. Also, bring more healthcare in the community at an alarming rate that the capacity of mobility and transportation is met and it's improved with more community-driven clinics in the community. Also, in closing, starting every Tuesday, as in tomorrow, Hidden Homeboy is hosting a mental health series called My Black Mental Health Matters on different topics from LGBTQ to people over 40, to men, to women, even the community, the disabled community. Make sure that you are checking out tomorrow with Hidden Homeboy, collaboration with UpCenter and the Public Health will be discussing tomorrow via Zoom. You will have the link tomorrow, Hidden Homeboy at six o'clock every Tuesday for the month of February. In closing, shout out to Meg for doing the work in Ward Five and how you are taking care of Black women and making sure that they are also seen in comfort for like Aliyah Lewis. Also, Colin, thank you for also Ward Two and also for hosting for Council of the Rent because we know there are a lot of Black bodies that are facing rent and a lot of discriminations that go along with rent and properties such as slum lords who tried to discount and disadvantage Black bodies. With that being said, y'all take care. Justin Michael Hendricks.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Nixon? Sarah, can you hear us?
It looks like Sarah has unmuted, but we're not, still not hearing anything.
Okay, sorry, Sarah can't hear anything. Beau Barber?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So thank you for letting me speak. I just, you know, I want to echo kind of like probably what you've heard several times tonight, but you know, I'm happy that this resolution is being made and it's a step of one of many that needs to be taken. I can appreciate a resolution that is, you know, for ending the systematic discrimination and racism that, you know, we see in this, we see in government and society today. I just also want to make sure that, you know, like others have said, and I'm not accusing y'all of this, but I'm just saying kind of how it all looks and it's important to carry through with things and keep your word. You know, y'all spend, y'all are going to spend over, you know, potentially over $10,000 on like all this riot gear. I mean, I don't really know how like, you know, these ballistic helmets have ever stopped racial discrimination, but you know, I'm just some podunk kid out in the rural part of the county. What do I know? You know, I just, I don't see how, unless these are like riot, riot helmets of friendship, how stuff like that's going to solve that problem. And instead, you know, that money could be invested into more things that are, things that are doing to prevent crime rather than address the response to crime. But like I said, I do appreciate the time and labor spent into making this resolution. It's an important first step and I think that, you know, this is, it's a great thing y'all have done here in this regard. I just want to make sure that, you know, you gotta have good follow-through. Otherwise, you know, we're going to be mad about this if you don't follow through and we're going to be back here like we are every week, but we'll be mad here. You know, so I think we can all agree. I don't want to be here on Monday night telling people off, not telling people off, but being all angry and stuff, you know? It's, but anyways, I hope y'all have a good night. Oh, also before I forget, water shut-offs are still happening. So yeah, they're still happening by the thousands in the entire state. And interested to see what we see on around, should be February 15th. We'll find out what the numbers for January were. And yeah, that's, it's not good. So anyways, yeah, people losing their water, you know, it's important. You need water for pretty much everything to live, stay healthy, be hydrated, my God. And anything you can and are able to do, well, go, go, you gotta go beyond at this point. You know, you gotta really stand up for your people here in this city and this municipality because like people are getting their water disconnected and this is, this has got to stop. I mean, yeesh, I don't know. Anyways, y'all have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Nixon, do you want to try one more time?
Hello, can you hear me this time?
There we go. Thank you.
Oh, great. I guess third time is the charm. I apologize for the technical glitch. My name is Sarah Nixon. I am a resident of Champaign County and thank you for this opportunity to speak to the council, the Urbana City Council. I first would like to remark that the the resolution committing to end structural racism and achieve racial equity is an extraordinary document, a historical document, and I'm so proud of Urbana to see it drafted and no doubt it will be voted. And at the same time though, it's, it's it's profoundly sad to see the city put forth this resolution with a trumpet blast while maintaining total silence and indifference toward the ongoing and escalating plight of Aliyah Lewis caused by the systemic racism and I would say incompetence of its police officers. If Urbana wants to earn the community's respect and trust, they need to do more than write flowery resolutions. They need to, the city needs to end its appalling immoral silence and take action immediately with regard to Ms. Lewis's case, consistent with the values and the resolutions expressed in this declaration. Additionally, as others have pointed out this evening, Urbana needs to invest actual budget dollars in supporting Black-owned businesses in Urbana's marginalized neighborhoods as well as establishing affordable and good quality grocery stores in its food deserts. And that's just among other things. I would also like to comment on, in response to a letter or in, you know, communication that was sent out by City Council Alderman Eric Sacks to the Urbana Neighborhood Association, the community's listserv or email group wherein Mr. Sacks effectively takes credit for, let's see, for, for for, for having some kind of substantial hand in bringing about this resolution. And I was very sad to read and surprised to read that email as I am one of the, you know, multitude of voices who have, it's not about me, but I have witnessed a multitude of voices and efforts made by, by people for many months, the better part of 2020, advocating energetically and with great dedication to bringing about these reforms. And I just want to support, I'm running out of time, so I won't go into detail, but Ms. Chong has written in response to Mr. Sacks' misrepresentations and I wanted to support Tracy Chong's illuminations of the reality and just express my sadness that Mr. Sacks would misrepresent his involvement and his role in bringing this resolution into being. and his role in bringing this resolution into being. Thank you.
Okay, next is Haki.
Hello, can anyone hear me? Hi, my name is Greg Matier. I am a recent graduate at the University of Illinois in Community Health. I'm going to be quick tonight just to echo what everyone said. And I've talked about it multiple times, the subject, the subjectivity and objectivity of racism, how a resolution is a subjective measurement. You can say that you're changing your ideological, your sinister ideological ways or you're actively redistributing wealth to the people, the objective measurement. So I stand in support of the resolution, but the resolution, the resolution would go better with some legislation. I have said multiple times, a need for the Richie Turner Law, which helps protect homeless individuals, and homeless individuals include domestic violence victims slash survivors who are actively running away. And so in Champagne County, the, the number of homeless people may be decreasing, but the percentage, the changing, the demographic change is exponential with a high increase of Black women and Black children, Black children and LGBTQ folks becoming homeless more. So we have to acknowledge that. So as long as, we can have a resolution, but let's, let's do this Richie Turner Law. As my brother Justin said, I will be giving a presentation on February 16th, my birthday, regarding the, talking about the Richie Turner Law, which we are writing up and which we will have petitions ready for people to sign and for the people in Champaign, Urbana to actively understand what are we looking for within the Richie Turner Law and be prepared for any pressure escalation on our part, because again, we need this done. Along with that resolution and that legislation, I pledge support to Meg, to Jared, to, uh, great, Grace, I pledge solidarity with them and everyone else running for, oh, Colin as well, everyone else running for office this year in both cities. But yes, tune into Hidden Homeboy's UpCenter and the CUPHD's Black Mental Health Series. I think you will learn a lot about from us as a people, what we are in need of and what we have been asking for for centuries, for centuries. So I end with that. Again, Richie Turner Law, we, we have it done. We have it done. It is now time for you all to come to the people and the people present to you what we need instead of you all coming to us and just telling this is what we're going to do. And I end with this. I also hope that these racial pod discussions do not end because a resolution is going to be signed regarding turning away white supremacy or turning away fascism. You can only, a pen and paper does nothing unless action is behind it, unless there's an actual change. And I end with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last one is Reader Connerly.
Good evening, Council. Reader Connerly, resident of Champaign. I'd like to echo the sentiments of many of the callers tonight. Happy Black History Month. Let's celebrate African-American history and let's start speaking true history. I agree that a resolution is one step in the right direction. However, in order for a fact of change, we need to see a reflection in our policies. Subjective measures, words are the most least purveyors of truth. In many of the callers, I can hear hesitancy relating this policy. You cannot blame us for why we are hesitant. We are holding you accountable for this resolution. Whereas equality does not come at the expense of another, but ensures that everyone gets what they need to be a full participant in their community. I kind of find it difficult to entrust that this resolution will stand, especially finding out that there is currently on the table a, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, a presentation to purchase additional riot gear, a bid that could possibly exceed $10,000 and to include 12 riot helmets, 12 gas masks, ballistic helmets, 15 first responder bags, and the bid is due on February 4th. Instead of purchasing gas masks and helmets, how about bike helmets for kids in our community? Instead of seeking to buy ballistic helmets when just two, or two weeks ago, we had a discussion about the use of force policy and the community's concern with DS population, but yet you are still seeking to spend tax dollars on materials that contribute to the detriment of Black and Brown bodies. These things don't go hand in hand. To have a, a resolution, but also a bid on the table to continue to buy the tools necessary while we still have Aaliyah waiting for charges being pressed against her. Drop all charges against Aaliyah Lewis. Protect Black women. Refuse the bid that is being presented to purchase more riot gear. And instead of enforcing more force against our people, make de-escalation a priority. What I'm asking is that instead of just making a resolution, make sure that we are following through with actions and measures that we can see. Again, this is Black History Month. I would hate for this to be a resolution released and contradicted by our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, I do have a note here that Reverend Dr. Underwood was having, she raising her hand. I was going to unmute her and see if we could get some public comment from her.
Reverend Dr. Underwood?
So Dr. Underwood, I've unmuted you, well, I've allowed you to unmute yourself, I should say. And from here, you'll want to go in the lower left-hand corner and click unmute, and then you'll be able to address the council. We'll give you a couple more seconds here, but you'll just want to go to the bottom left-hand corner. And there should be a little microphone there that'll say unmute. And if you click on that, then you'll unmute yourself.
Jason, did you also unmute Bishop Underwood?
I, I did, only because I wasn't too sure what phone she was on. But on either, on either phone, they would be able to do that.
Unmute, unmute, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Yes, we can hear you now, Dr. Underwood.
I got my computer on upstairs. I got two phones downstairs, plus I called in on my home phone. All, all night. And, and now, I don't know what's going on. But apparently one of the phones, let me get off my home phone and then get on my, because I called in on my own home phone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
You, you've got, yeah.
I'm gonna have to turn some of these phones off. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. I got three phones and, and a, a computer upstairs. I don't know what's going on, but anyway. What everybody else has been saying, I agree wholeheartedly. I, I've heard, now one phone, Bishop C, can you turn this one off? Let me turn that one off. Okay, I got that one off now. Okay. Action speaks louder than words. The words are beautiful, historic, truth. But we need to add on with action, is what I wanted to say. A lot of people have given ideas, and I'm so grateful to see these young people step forward and give ideas to our city leaders. That's what we need. Don't stop. Don't be silent. We must speak. We must see that our city take action on what is written. Now, I would say in the written document, they need to explain the difference between, well, they need to explain in parentheses, de facto, because a lot of people don't understand de facto or de jure unless you're in the legal field or something of that nature. So if this is going to the public, which I believe it is, we need to put in parentheses what de facto means, so the general public can understand it. But as I forestated, we need to put action. Danielle spoke to it. Ms. Megan spoke to it. I had noted a number of the other people. Colin, I think, spoke to. I mean, a lot of people had a lot of good ideas, and we need to continually listen, listen, hear our public, because it's we, the people. Don't ever forget that. We, the people, we do not want to lose our democracy and our republic. But we, the people, got to stand, and when we've done all we can do to stand, we got to stand therefore. That's biblical. And you stand by not being silent. It's not easy to speak up. Yes, you're going to be retaliated against. There are going to be reprisals. But you still got to stand. You still got to let your words be heard. I would just like to say one other thing, because my time is maybe almost up. For years, we've been fighting the consent decree and all. And I was talking to a friend the other night about Chris Evans. I'm glad to see him running, because he's been with us all the time in Peoria with the federal government, the consent decree, over in Urbana, at the Confederate building, the consent decree, other things that we fought for years, marching peacefully over in Urbana years ago with Grandpa. His, his, I forget his name, but we used to call him Grandpa, and all the rest of us. And I'm glad to see that he's put himself out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more. Ellen Exeran?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So I want to first just reemphasize a point that I made at the Urbana School Board in late of 2019, which was that I've written reports, I've written statements about what I believed, and I've received feedback on those things in high school. I've received feedback on those things in undergrad. I've received feedback in those things as a graduate employee. And I've frequently witnessed this body being hostile to feedback. That's disappointing. I'm glad to see that it seems to be accepted more openly tonight. But I'm reminded about December of 2019 when community members begged you, presented research to you not to spend $300,000 on putting more police in our schools when there is information showing that that is not effective, when other methods of addressing violence in schools, such as the Oakwood model, Oakland's model that James Tiger Coben presented to you that day, were better suited for. You prioritized the consistent, coherent, and respectful relationship between other units of governments over the people who care in this community. And what I would like to see is that any resolution on anti-racism address your racism, no matter your background. That was a racist, systemically so, action. And you all voted for that six to one. So what I would like to see is that this resolution be amended. Yes, I know that it's written much in advance and that there's the expectation that it will be passed as written. But I would ask that it is written to specifically mention the culpability of this body, because I am tired of seeing apologies from different public officials who apologize for things to become more accepted in the community rather than for apologizing for the things they've done and who they've done it to and how it's affected them. This is a meaningful resolution. I'm not diminishing the resolution. I'm diminishing the integrity behind the people acting on this resolution. So with that, I would like to say that we have a People's City Council event Thursday at 7:00 PM, featuring a dozen candidates for municipal government who have pledged to not only end chronic homelessness, but to also defund the police and to end or to close gaps in our domestic violence survivor support systems. These are fundamental and basic changes that we all need to see. And for the folks who are disproportionately affected, it is inherently anti-racist. Have a good evening.
Okay, thanks. Okay, that is it for public input.